Expedia fashion. It does affect Oxford much more than it affects Butner, just due to the special circumstances that Oxford has. Other communities that are served by volunteer fire department or a district such as Brassfield or Providence or Antioch or any of those will essentially receive funding through this. And, long story short, Oxford may lose funding.
That's what I was hoping that somebody explained. Okay, I'm good.
If I remember correctly, at that presentation, the commissioners did say that there are probably two districts that will opt out, Butner and Oxford.
Right, so legally, they cannot establish a county-wide fire district if it covers the entire county. So they actually have to have, so with the way the language is, is it's drafted that all the municipalities will be excluded and then a municipality has to do a resolution that requests being added in. So Alan is correct that Butner Public Safety in the City of Oxford are, will not. So that makes it possible for them to proceed, but it can impact depending on how our surrounding businesses take the... So we've prepared remarks and the chief and I will go prepare to make them and on our behalf to do our best that we can to represent the City of Oxford's interests and to use Alan's words, make it clear that we believe that the county should be as committed to the City of Oxford as it is to all the other jurisdictions, whether you are incorporated or living at large in the county, that everybody should at the minimum be held harmless from this action. So that is the point that we're going to make, that Oxford should not suffer an ill- and we can also make a request. So we'll see how it goes.
Good.
So there, so if our meeting goes late, I'm going to hand off to Mayor Proton. But with that, so there we are, and it's a good presentation. He'll do a good job next week, I'm sure. We have no public hearings, city business. We've got five resolutions requesting state slash loans, grants for clean water and drinking water. So do any, we will take a vote on each of these separately. Do any of you all have any questions at this time? Will our, we, normally when we do these resolutions, we already have a sum of money in mind. And I, you know, admittedly, I was going through this, but I didn't see any sums of money. So normally, we have a sense of how the applications will impact our debt service and so on. Can we get a little understanding about?
I'll begin and I'll let the engineer fill in the blanks where I miss. Our intent and purpose in doing this is, of course, that the state of North Carolina is essentially, to a certain extent, flush with some cash that has come down from the federal government for the ARPA funding that it received that is being funneled into these programs that we have availed ourselves to in the last five or six years and made these improvements and replacements and renovation projects of which we've all seen all over the place in digging up our streets. The opportunity is there in the spring round of funds, of funding, to potentially take best advantage of finding grant funds and/or zero percent interest loan funds to either continue some of those 2016 City of Oxford Infrastructure Initiative projects or to seek grants like for the AMR meter replacements at no cost to the City of Oxford. So that is really the intent behind pursuing this, is that we maximize our opportunity to receive grant funding because it is my understanding that the spring round of funding, they intend to try to give out about seventy percent of the funds that they have received from the federal government in the spring round of funding with thirty percent coming in the fall. So the greatest opportunity will be in this round of funding for us to potentially receive grant and loan funds or zero percent loan interest, zero percent interest loan funds and do the best that we possibly can as far as debt service and all of those things for the City of Oxford and its citizens. So that's really the thought process behind it. Amy has much more intrinsic knowledge of the numbers. But I believe the first two projects, and I'm not looking at the page at the moment, I'm looking at the third page. Couple of those projects are asking for additional funding to complete a couple of the projects that are already underway that had increased in costs.
That we, okay, that we had to cut pieces out of. Those are the, Amy, those are the shovel-ready ones?
Yes.
Okay.
So we believe that we stand a fairly good opportunity to receive either grant and/or zero percent interest loans for those projects due to the fact that not only do they have some additional funds via the ARPA funding, but due to the fact that they are shovel-ready. As we've said many times about these ARPA funds, you have to have projects ready and they have to expend their funds, just like we have to expend ours by 2026. So hopefully, they will be looking most favorably upon providing funding to entities that have shovel-ready projects. So we're just hoping to take best advantage of the opportunity.
Okay, and so sewer system phase five is along the same line, but maybe not the engineering? Hasn't all been completed on that?
Water and Sewer Phase Five is projects that, projects that have not started in the way they perform. And we're working with the consulting firm, McCall Engineering, to determine what size and scope that they could undertake in the timeline that we have to actually design and build the project. And so those numbers are something that we are still tweaking to look at, you know, if you have to get the survey done and determining the approach, you know, how much timeline that we have to do that. So we have not finalized how large or small those projects would be. And as Alan said, the meter modernization, AMI, is something that we have looked at frequently.
Yes, ma'am.
Often Steve, our friends, move forward with that and if we get funds to do that for the existing system, we want to do forward with new developments, but certainly, you know, something that supports the existing system and will over no cost to the city.
Sure. So is it reasonable to say that as you flesh out the details of the applications that you could at least come back and do an informational thing so the board has a better sense of?
Absolutely. I think a decent way to look at this is that there is, what is it, April twentieth?
May second.
May second deadline to submit your resolution. So basically, what you're doing is providing a letter of intent to send that funding in order to earmark yourself, so to speak, that you're interested in receiving those funds. That's what we're really attempting to do here with them, trying to move as quickly as they can is to move as quickly as we can in order to be eligible.
Great.
There will be additional requirements of this board to pursue and receive these funds and/or accept them at later dates if we move far enough along that line.
Thank you very much.
For those of you that have been around for the last several years, you, you know, will recall that most of these projects have about four resolutions before we actually, you know, complete the project. So there is certainly, you know, this is, we want to apply and then there's the offer and acceptance and those of, you know, will go before the board to say, you know, yes, we want to move forward with this project and we're willing to accept the funding that's offered, whether it's for all grant principal forgiveness and loans, zero percent low interest, what have you.
Okay.
And for example, we would probably not recommend you moving forward with the AMI unless we receive grant funds because it really doesn't make a lot of sense for us.
But it would be great if we could get that funded.
But, you know, if it's low interest loan or something, it's still a twenty-year repayment and the life cycle of those meters is ten-plus years, not twenty. So we don't know that it would make really good sense to do that, but we're hoping we receive grant funds.
Okay, excellent. Thank you very much. I appreciate that. Any other questions from anybody else? Okay, moving forward, item B, consider approving the resurfacing initiative on Williamsboro Street, Main Street and College Street and the College Street lights. The city, I'm going to read through this because we've had some discussion. City potentially has the opportunity to add additional work to the DOT resurfacing contract to add landscape bulbouts, medians and upscale crosswalks on Williamsboro Street and Main Street and the possibility of adding decorative lighting to the new median, which will be created on College Street with the utility project. So the estimated cost is two hundred thousand to do Williamsboro Street. Main Street is a hundred and fifty thousand and College Street. The lights, every hundred feet and conduit installed is seventy-five thousand. And, and of course, all of this depends on DOT approving it and the contractor being willing to incorporate this work into the project. But this could be an opportunity. So at this time, do any of you all, oh, and as I recall, and it's not here in the narrative, but there is some overpayment that we did. Am I correct about to the tune of two hundred and twenty-five-ish thousand? Am I remembering that correctly?
Approximately two hundred and fifty-two thousand. And that is if the contract with DOT does not experience any hiccups, that, you know, we find something on the streets that will resurfaceing that requires that they can work to complete the work that's already in the plan.
So it's not solid, but we're hopeful?
Correct.
Right, okay. That would offset a lot of this. So any questions from anybody?
Just one.
Yes, sir.
The, the streetlights, did you come up with a design for the streetlights? I know I saw some pictures at one time of possible designs for these decorative streetlights.
We did. Internally, we've looked at several of them. I'm trying to give you a visual of some that are around. But they're going to be from twelve to eighteen feet maximum, black and with the either acorn style decorative top on. And these lights are decorative in nature. They're not designed to be
Right.
streetlights for safety purposes. They're for aesthetics as much as anything. And we'll really make that entryway into the City of Oxford really pop is what it will do. If you've noticed since the committee meeting that we had last week, we've added a few more streetlights as far as decreasing the distance between them.
That's right.
And thinking of it in terms of what you want to accomplish visually, it's going to be more attractive to have lights based in this fashion rather than farther apart.
I just remember seeing some pictures of them and it sounds like that's the one.
There are, and we still have time, you know, to make that choice. But what we need to do now is if we're going to do it, get that directive from this governing body and start having those conversations with the Department of Transportation and the contractor. That's, that's the key for this right now.
Given Commissioner Tovey's question, would it not be, I mean, we could, if the board so chose next week to vote and move this forward, that would still give us, because the lights, to my understanding, there are a variety of styles that Duke Energy offers. So conceivably, that conversation could still be had among members of this body or including maybe the DOE DC or the Appearance Commission that, so that we could maybe get some input. Because I would also imagine that if at any time we try to put this type of streetlight, we would, downtown, we would want it to be the same one.
Absolutely. I mean, you could envision it going out in the LK at some point in time.
Right.
And even at the end of Main Street where we have the medias.
Lovely. So, great. Thank you. Any other questions? So then I just have one, and that is, you know, there's been a lot of, and I can't believe that I didn't think of this earlier, but over the years in the downtown master plan, there's been a lot of discussion about the trees and the discussion about maybe removing the lollipop trees, which are really great at Christmas time, but not so great the rest of the year. And, and putting in some shade trees in downtown that are suitable to be underwires even though we, because we now have a new UDO that has a list of trees that are appropriate for those locations. And how complicated or expensive would it be to, if the board chooses to go forward with everything else, to go ahead and, and bring in new trees?
I don't have the specific exact answer for you. I don't even know the exact number of trees and tree vaults currently in that entire area. I don't believe it would be dramatically expensive to do that. I've been through this before. We, we did the same thing in Tarboro and really changed the look downtown. And the reason why we wanted to have this conversation is that if you really think of it in terms of this enhancement project and lights down College Street and all of the above, the crosswalks and the new pavement, that's going to be completed. Their contract ends in November. Typically, when you plant new trees is around that same time of late fall and winter. So this would be a component of that project as far as enhancements if you're not as enamored with the Dr. Seuss trees as I am. It would give us the opportunity to do, what we did in Oxford was consult the NC State University and had some folks come up from their agronomy program and take a look at what we had, make recommendations. And we went through a, a public process of conveying to the public what it would look like, what species that we chose. We chose three different species so that, other than the dead of winter, you had something attractive all year round. It was either something blooming in the spring, something with bright foliage in the fall and something that was attractive during the warmer seasons rather than just the constant Dr. Seuss gumdrop kind of thing. So in doing this, you know, what better time to me, would it be to go back through your downtown and look at those tree vaults? And if you're going to do that, remove them, grind the stumps, work on the vaults themselves. Some of them are mismatched in size, some of them are mismatched in terms of having metal grates and some not. And just adding to that enhanced look of what you're trying to do downtown without, you know, spending twenty-six million dollars like the master plan is. For, for what we're going to invest, if the board decides to move forward with these enhancements and the DOT makes all the resurfacing, what you're going to spend is going to be of significant impact visually to your downtown. It, it really will. By the time you do the traffic circle, do all the crosswalks, do the resurfacing, change the trees, recreate the vaults, make them all similar, do something as far as the covering, the grates, whatever. There's a lot of different options out there now other than those heavy metal things. What a tremendous look you can envision seeing in Oxford, adding the lights, you know, doing those kinds of things. You have made a tremendous impact for the investment of potentially less than five hundred thousand dollars if we have the two hundred plus come back to us that we've already provided the DOT. So what we wanted to do today is plant that seed, really, and see what you think. If it's just absolutely no, no and blank, no, you know, that the trees are off limits, don't ever touch them, I love them, then tell me that. But if you tell me otherwise, in probably an hour to fifteen minutes with my Husqvarna chainsaw and commercial new chain on it, I can probably get them down real quick.
We'll cut it, we'll cut it to forty-five. I'll meet you down there.
All you gotta do is turn me loose. I'll take care of it.
Yep.
But, you know, honestly, you, you're looking at a great opportunity. That's the way that I look at it. You're looking at a great opportunity to just about totally redo the look in that area.
That's great.
Should you choose to do it.
Great. It's, I consider that to be low end cost, high impact because that's something that's going to shape the look and the feel of downtown for generations potentially. So I'm certainly put my vote all for it.
So is there an interest among consensus among you all to add a number four to this list of four and say, consider including trees here? Or do you just want the question to come up and you might have a little more to answer? How, how would you like this to go forward?
Since this is not a municipal election year, we'll, we'll all still be here. And so you'll remember this conversation. All I really need is if this board is in consensus of taking that initiative, we will contact the Ag Extension, NC State, do that, have some folks come in, take a look because there are trees specific to urban environments that are much better, stand a better opportunity to survive in those vaults with limited moisture and limited exposure and all those types of things as well as the proper species that isn't going to grow to a thirty-foot tree and spill out of that vault with its root ball and do all those kinds of things. So, you know, allowing them the opportunity to have their say and input and then go through a public process of conveying that because part of it that we, we did in Tarboro was to create a visual as well as the, how it's going to look. And you get buy-in that way, you know, from, from the people that live and work downtown as well as your citizens. And I think you have time to do that.
What, we had one time talking about the lights on the trees. They were not all the same, so we would...
That was the just...
Those were ones on the poles.
What, great, great point. And then just that there were some lights missing from some of that tree, absolutely. So...
So those were, those, those were...
So we don't need to do anything to change this item on the, oh, excuse me, Commissioner. Yes, ma'am. I apologize.
Your question back though was the lights on the, the Christmas lights that, um...
Mr. Manning.
I thought Mr. Black spoke, talked about them at, at the retreat.
Those, those were like the lights and the snowflakes and the stars and all of that that are on the poles.
Yeah, that was on the poles.
That's what we were talking.
So we're talking about taking out the holly light trees through town.
We would put them back into the trees that we replaced them with.
That's what I was, I was thinking.
They're basically string lights and you string them, you string them back to the trees.
I, I don't know that I have a preference one way or the other with regards to what's there. But my only concern would be, okay, we, we are continuously adding to the beautification of downtown. When does it migrate to down to Kingsborough Street at the intersection right through there or the intersection at Martin Luther King or that whole thoroughfare coming into Martin Luther King? I mean, so, I mean, so when do, when do they get a little piece of the beautification?
Well, I think it's, you know, the old moniker, you gotta crawl before you can walk and walk before you can run. And since the downtown is the heart of our community, it's natural that you would start there. You did hear me mention that, you know, hopefully with the decorative lighting going on College Street, that the objective is to add them on Main going towards East Front Street as well as Martin Luther King down through there and replace ultimately those ugly old wooden poles down through there. That's the most unattractive thing I've ever seen in my life.
And there are those same trees going down the median, aren't they down the median on Martin Luther King?
There's a, there's a few.
There's a few.
Yeah, there's a few. There's not many, but they are, they are a few.
It's a mix of crepe myrtles and lollipop trees and something else.
But that's a good question.
Because that would look nice coming in, coming into town from that.
I, I see where the sign says, welcome to Oxford, and it says, what, eighteen, sixteen or whatever. There's nothing attractive about that other than there's this, this piece of concrete there with this engraved in it. I mean, so we're talking about inviting people to our downtown, well, they have to pass all of, all of these things that we could also spruce up. And I'm just saying, you know, spread a little bit. I mean, because we're doing and offering a lot for the downtown. We're, we're doing, we're, we're, I mean, just today, I was amazed at the, the new stuff. Anyway, I mean, so I think we should work harder at giving everybody a little taste of the new Oxford versus concentrating it all right here. I mean, because you don't want people to boycott and then say, no, I'm not injured in it because they only think about this group of people. Let them deal, you know? You don't want that. You want everybody to feel like they have a vested interest in this community. And in order for us to do that, we need to make sure that, one, we're spending that arc of money in a way that it benefits all of us as well as any little things that we can do for our citizens to make them all feel included. I understand the vitality of the downtown. I get that, but it can't be exclusively about that, that, that population because you want to invite everybody from the outskirts of the community into this downtown.
I think that's the initiative in and of itself.
I mean, so that would be your ultimate goal, but you don't want to make them feel excluded when you don't throw, and I'm, and that's not a good word to use. But you don't want to, to give them something to be excited about their community also. I mean, where they live, where...
I hear you. I hear you. I think that, you know, in looking at it in those terms, I, I don't disagree that you should look at it in terms of phasing in what you're doing. For instance, right now, as your budget officer, I'm doing your budget. And in doing the budget as far as the one I'm going to propose, it's all about prioritization. That's, that's what it's all about. And always, and my department heads are tired of hearing about it, but my budget philosophy is want to and need to. There are certain things you need to do and then there's a lot of things that you want to do. And we always try to take care of the need to and keep in mind the want to's when you have the funding available to do it. So I hear exactly what you're saying. I would say in response that, you know, with, with what is being proposed at the cost level that you're seeing represents the opportunity for the biggest bang for the buck right now. And I'm not saying that we would not look at other areas in the future.
And I, I understand how we ended up moving forward with the, or the potential moving forward of the College Street. It makes financially good sense. It does. But you can't keep adding to it.
But, but I would add, and then I know Commissioner Khan has commented that we did the master plan for the downtown twenty fifteen, sixteen? It was a, and this is part, that, so I asked that question because it was, it was part of that. So there was a year-long planning process that went into the master plan. And as the manager said, when you price out, the, trying to do the master plan, I mean, I probably hear once a week about undergrounding the wires and that's a five million dollar project in and of itself. So that's the only reason that it came up. But let me, I saw Commissioner Khan raising, waving.
So I, I think, first of all, I agree with my colleague that we want to make sure, you, of course, yeah. I was nodding towards you. I'm sorry. Non-audible cue. I'm sorry. I apologize. That we want to make sure that we don't forget about areas of the community that are historically underserved. Mr. Thornton would probably remember within about fourteen minutes of being sworn in, I started pounding him about, about what's referred to as a tree survey and an urban forestry program. This might be an opportune time because the downtown with the vaults and so forth, that makes sense. We've talked about that. There's a pretty clear idea what we want to do there. But for the other areas of town that we want to eventually consider, we possibly might find some dollars in this to go ahead and figure out how we want to do a tree survey, which essentially is getting folks from NC State or other ag schools to come in. Look at what we have on streets such as MLK, Williamsboro, other areas, as well as streets like Orange Street, Granville Street, Cogashaw, you know...
Peace.
P Street, all, anywhere we have those ugly, ugly trees that have been cut down or neighborhoods that have lost their trees, understand what we got, what, what their conditions are and we can understand what we need to go back, what, what are the high priority areas and what we can put there. So it's building a plan to help us move forward, as generally referred to as an urban forestry program or plan. But that might be something that we can get the ball rolling on to so we have a roadmap and some runway... that might be something that we can get the ball rolling on to, so we have a roadmap and some runway to start helping serve those communities in the future. Yeah. That'd be my recommendation. In addition, in addition to getting rid of the lollipops.
So what I'm hearing, you're making some great points, Commissioner Gilreath, but what I'm hearing is, is there a, one, we don't need to do anything to the agenda item, we can leave it as is. But if there is consensus from the board that there is interest in looking at turning over the options of the, you know, go- going to a new set of trees downtown, the city manager can um, maybe start the ball rolling on that piece? Great. And is there, you know, with the insight that you have, Commissioner Khan, regarding the, some funding opportunities that you've already seen, is it unreasonable to say, is that something that he could look at in conjunction with Kenny Manning? To see if we have the, what information would be needed to pull together to see if there's a funding opportunity? Because there are some resources at the state that could support.
I think the, I would, ideally, um, the grant opportunities for the tree survey have come and gone, um, this, this cycle. I think what makes the most sense, because I believe that's fairly low cost. Uh, if we can just tie it into the tree replacement that we're doing for downtown to help fund that piece. Because I believe we can leverage, um, again, the agricultural schools, whether it be, um, NC, you know, the A and T or NC State to help actually go out and look at every single tree, tag every tree, write the report. Uh, and then beyond that, once we have that report, then we can then begin the process of, of creating additional resources and plans. But that, that piece of it, that survey, I would like to see if we could just find the funding within what we're doing for the trees downtown. Because again, I, I suspect that's gonna be a reasonably low cost, particularly if we leverage the universities to help with, um, fill.
It is, um, as far as the downtown tree initiative, if NC State or A and T or somebody along those lines do not already have a full slate, typically they're using students under the direction of one professor to come and get that experience. So it's, it's helping them too. Um, so we, we leverage that in Tarboro, getting those students to come out and perform that study. And they also did a inventory of the trees on the common. You know, there's the big forty-some acre common down there, uh, in Tarboro. And they inventoried all those trees at basically no cost as a project. So you, you just have to contact them and see what they can do for you and kind of work from there to see what resources are available out there and at what cost. There's a number of them. You can go through forestry, ag service, all of the above, and see what they have to offer and determine what's the best fit. But for now and moving forward, we would need to make those contacts quickly regarding the tree repla- downtown tree replacement initiative. Let's call it that. And see what we can do and move forward reasonably quickly. Because I mean, November, December will be upon us before we know it.
That's great. Any comments from all who've hit comment cell this way, anything, anything? Okay, excellent, thank you. We, thank you very much, everybody. Moving forward to item C, consider the American Rescue Plan Act Grant, Act Grant Project Ordinance Amendment, taking the standard allowances authorized by thirty-one CFR, Part thirty-five dot six, Paragraph D one. Um, so this is, uh, to consider taking the standard allowance of up to ten million dollars, not to exceed the award amount to spend on government services through December thirty-first, twenty twenty-six, um, which would, uh, give us streamlined reporting and client, uh, and compliance requirements. Um, so staff recommends that we elect to take the standard allowance, uh, for the entire award amount, which is two point eight three one million, and, um, and move forward with that. Are there any questions at this time? And that is just for, you, you, isn't the, the, the term for it, you know, it's like loss of funding or something that's on the agenda?
No, no, it's not, it's not revenue replacement or anything like that. Th- this is a clarification that was provided via the final rule that has come out regarding the ARPA funds. A, a lot of the information initially that went around was as a part of the interim rule for the ARPA funding. And in determining the final rule, the federal government has basically greatly lessened the restrictions on it. And in such, the reporting requirements for such. For municipalities or any governmental entity receiving ten million or less, you can take the standard allowance or elect to take the standard allowance and utilize your ARPA funding that you have received or your entity for the provision of government services.
Government services, okay. I knew there was some standard thing and I just couldn't remember what it was. Um.
We're doing this now because our first required report to be submitted is at the end of this month.
That's right.
And we either choose to take that standard allowance or we, we're talking about all these tons of bureaucratic documents that we would have to go through in order to do it. This provides you flexibility, essentially is what it does, um, to make the determination of what you're going to expend your funds on. It's not saying what that is going to be, it is just saying you elect the standard option allowance.
Okay, that's great. And at this time, for that first report that's due on April thirtieth, we, we haven't expended any.
That is correct.
Okay, so it's just saying, okay, great. Any further questions on that? Then we have the consent agenda, uh, and any, any further questions? So then, uh, reminders, April ninth, Easter egg hunt, is that on Hicks Field? Okay. Uh, April eleventh to the fifteenth is also recreation, spring break camp. Is that a half day, full day?
Full day.
And, um, how's that going? How, how have you done with signups for that?
Um, it's going a little bit slow, but honestly, we'll get more this week, probably because people sort of wait to the last minute. And this year with spring break break, fall night, um, where Easter Monday, I mean, I'm sorry, uh, Good Friday, people are out that day. Then, um, so it's going on a four-day camp. And so I think that's kind of slowed the registration a little bit.
Okay, great, thank you. Regular board meeting next week, April twenty-third, Art and Wine Festival. And then April twenty-eighth, My Heaven's Tivessy, the first alive after five. Okay, uh, if there is anything to add, let's start now with Commissioner Lumpkin's. Is there anything you would like to add?
Uh, no, it's not at this point.
Commissioner Bullock. Mayor Pro Tem.
Question, um, to the board. Had, has any members of the board been getting calls about the incidents that are happening in Oxford? And you don't know anything about? At one time we were getting reports, we would get a, a notice, you know, um, gunshots on Hicks Mill Road, you know, no incidents. And, and I, I was contacted, caught off guard because I didn't know anything about any gunshots happening on Riley Road or anything. And I was just wondering, had anybody else gotten any questions or?
I get some.
You should still be getting those reports.
We don't.
No, the, I don't get the, at one time we were getting alerts.
The police report, this is diff- this is a.
Oh, okay. Not the monthly police report.
Okay, okay.
I'm talking about, we used to get, uh, you know, on your phone.
An email.
An email.
That would go out.
That would go out.
Commissioner Strickland said he didn't want to hear in church from somebody about a shooting that he didn't already know about. And so the chief would, if a shooting happened, the chief would send out a message that this happened, we're looking into it or we've got somebody or they're, whatever. But it was just kind of so that we were informed.
It was just kind of caught off guard.
The last few years of Chief Colley's tenure here, he would send that to me and I would convey it to you via email. Um, I didn't get anything from the Chief of Police over the weekend about any shooting incident. So oftentimes, you know.
It wasn't this weekend.
Shooting incidents are not what they're reported to be. Um, if, if we have an incident, the chief, chief actually sent me a report over the weekend about the, uh, chase by the highway patrol into town that hit one of our flowerpots.
Mm.
Um, but, you know, nobody was injured. So I, I know that she will send me any notification of any serious incident that takes place and I will endeavor to relay that immediately to you.
Please.
Um, if something of note takes place.
It was, and it wasn't this past weekend anything. I just happened to get caught off guard and that. Ironically, really ironically, I'm thinking in my mind, gosh, it wasn't in Grabow. But, um, and wasn't aware of it and it's just a commissioner not being aware and the person says, you, you're on the board and you don't know what's happening in your own town, man. Okay, okay, okay. But that, you know, and I was wondering, is anybody else getting any concerns or?
No, I, I get them.
Issues about that. Um, can we just get a little bleep, anything, anything?
We talked about the one at our last meeting.
Hmm?
The one at our last meeting that.
Yeah, the gunshot while we were in a meeting and.
Yeah.
I saw, found that out in the paper.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, yeah, that's.
Yeah, I was kind of disappointed that that's the headline in the paper.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Something, it's just, um, citizens are always ready to catch us
Yeah.
unprepared and without knowledge of something. So I was just.
To expound on that for just a moment, Mayor, um, if the board can help me with clarification as to what you expect, you know, and the incident that Commissioner Lumpkin just brought up brings that into full effect for me, that was nothing more than someone firing a gun in the air. Is that what you want? Because you'll get something all the time.
I don't know.
Now, if you want something where someone has been shot or someone has been injured or there's been an officer-involved shooting or something where there's been a death, fatality, such as a pedestrian crossing, uh, MLK on ninety-six, something like that, that is what we were sending before.
Right.
We were not sending out, you know, some knuckleheads at three o'clock in the morning decide to fire off a couple of shots.
I think the, oh, Commissioner, go ahead.
Well, the, the shooting in the air, but did it, did it, did it take place on the basketball court?
Sorry, say that again.
The shooting in the air, um, while we were in the meeting last week, I mean, last month. Was that, um, was that on the basketball court?
Was someone driving by in a vehicle and popped off shots or what happened?
No.
That was the result of a fight began in the basketball, basketball game and I think there were four thousand gym team, correct?
No, she, she's talking about the one at the basketball court.
At the end of the year. It was a fight at the basketball game. They were put out of the basketball game and it went.
No, 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 we're talking about Hicks Court outside.
The outside court. I'm at the basketball court right here at.
Yep.
Federal Communications, that's the same incident I'm talking about.
No, there was a fight in the gym.
Yeah, the fight in the gym, that was like a couple of weeks.
That, we had two fights in the gym. That's, the first fight called us two to provide security. The night that I was sworn in, that we had shots fired, it was a fight inside the basketball game that came outside into the ballboard.
Okay.
I, I heard that it was in the basketball, uh, at the, where the chief says, um, outside, yeah.
The shots fired, it was juvenile. It was a male and a female, the male shot at the female.
Oy.
And involved juveniles, involved reactions, it was about petitions. Um, he got the moms involved, involved, um, and that's really because it's juveniles that I really can't say a lot about.
Yeah.
That's right, that's what it is, yeah.
Except for fortunately, he was a bad shot.
Yeah.
Lucky, lucky. Lucky.
Gosh, so it just goes to show me, too.
I didn't know it was, but the list did come in.
That's good. Good, these are, these are the kind of conversations we need to have. Okay. It's, so I, I have, one, very quickly comment about that. These people, because it was a firearm, probably don't qualify. But anytime you have anything with juveniles, are you all referring to Juvenile Crime Prevention Council, if it's appropriate?
If it's part of.
Okay, that's thing one. Thing two is, with respect to the manager's comment of, you know, listing
more of you.
about what we want to hear, it seems to me that if we have a very clear guideline, exactly as you stated, Ms. Thornton, then if anybody else says to us or posts, which I see far more often on Next Door, just all kinds of rants, then we would be able to say, I, we hear from the chief and the manager when somebody has been hurt or, and all those things. So it seems like we don't have to, to include every single thing if we have a really clear list. And I can't even remember everything you put, but that sounded like a great list.
So, just one, one clarification, I suppose. So certainly, the major incidents, I totally get. Um, I would probably just add to that a caveat, if something were to happen as reported or alleged or whatever it might be in a, let's call it, um, a population center. So if it happened in downtown or if it happened here at, you know, at, at the courthouse complex or it happened at Walmart where there, you know, someone starts shooting, even though it might be benign, as benign as a shooting could be. But, uh, those, if it happens in an area that is heavily populated, uh, with people, um, that's typically where we start getting a lot of questions, right? So if I, if someone gets mad and has that shooting in the parking lot of Walmart or at the basketball court or in the middle of Main Street, probably helpful that we, that we at least know because at least I can anticipate, I'm gonna start getting six thousand questions. Because, um, it's much like Mayor Pro Tem said, I, I love, you'll, you'll catch me off cutting my grass and people will stop and start asking me sixty-two questions, um, you know, so. But it's usually those, those incidents that are, again, fairly, um, high visible, I suppose, might be a right, a right word, so.
Yes, sir.
I certainly agree with the list he had, but unless I missed it, and I may have, I would also include that somebody shot at someone, not necessarily hitting them, but a threat was there.
Okay. So maybe, Mr. Thornton, you could send out, uh, these are the items that I was thinking we would include and that way if there's something that.
You will endeavor to do so.
That would be wonderful. Thank you. We appreciate that. And Chief, thank you as well.
Thank you, Chief.
Okay, I'm writing myself a note. Okay, excellent, thank you. Mayor Pro Tem, Commissioner Bridges.
I don't have anything.
Okay, Commissioner Tovey.
Uh, I don't think so. I think the, we can add on items on the agenda once we meet next week. Right, there's a couple of items I'd like to add on.
Oh, well, if you wanna add them, tell you, speak up.
Um, there's the, um, downtown social district in. I'd like to add that to the agenda. And the future land use plan, I'd like to add that to the agenda for the full board to consider.
Okay.
Yeah, the future land use plan.
Contractor, that's okay. Excellent, thank you very much. Um, Commissioner Gilreath.
Um, that was Alan today regarding the budget and would like for the committee to convene um, as soon as we can come up with a handful of dates to present to the rest of the board of when we want to have this meeting. Okay, so that would be Kwan and.
Brian.
And I'll be contracted in the bar.
Okay, excellent. Okay, thank you. Commissioner Khan.
Uh, yes ma'am, a couple of things. So, uh, let's see, remote handwriting here. First, um, quick question, uh, Tina, this might be a, a you question, this might be a Steven question. Uh, getting the water turned back on at the dog park, I'm assuming that's probably something seasonally that we do, is probably shut off until.
It was turned on Friday.
Okay, cool.
Yeah, we wait, we try to wait.
Yeah.
It's a real finicky water fountain. It's not works on that thing. It's really hard to replace. So honestly, we probably shouldn't have done it Friday. We shouldn't wait until this week, but.
Gotcha. All right, sounds good. So, just making sure of that. Um, secondly, I, I would like to request, uh, the city manager, city staff, um, a staffing report to be given to us on a monthly basis um, to reflect current level of staffing as compared to the prior year, um, specifically. And, um, any information that we may have ongoing about potential upcoming retirements or resignations. So we get a, a better understanding of where our staffing level sits realistically. so we get a, a better understanding of where our staffing level sits realistically. Again, not looking for presentation, but I think a simple, uh, much like we get a finance report on a monthly basis, if we can understand what is happening in that, in that arena. Is that a reasonable request?
I think so.
We were doing it.
Okay.
I don't, I don't have an excuse for why we're no longer doing it, but, uh, we'll begin doing it once again.
Righty. And I suppose just one point of clarification, uh, on the trees. Do you need any assistance in terms of, uh, for the, um, the tree survey to speak to extension or to NC State or A and T to help potentially coordinate costs and so forth? Or is that, we undertake that as part of normal prepping for trees downtown? That was just based on the conversation we were, we were having back and forth here a moment ago, I just wanted to make sure I had the, uh, deliverables correct.
Yep, uh, I think at this point, we would, we being staff would gladly accept any information that we find, independently from what we're going to seek to do. I think it's a situation now where we compare notes, so to speak, as we go.
Sure.
Seek the involvement of any board member that wishes to do this, I think ultimately it's going to go, you know, initially, once we get it set where we're heading to a committee, and the committee start looking at the components of it, including holding public meetings to convey that information through that process. So there will be an opportunity for involvement, but, uh, initially it is what resources are out there and available that we can potentially pursue, so if you have any information along those lines, please share.
Gotcha, I will, uh, keep you posted, I'll reach out to, uh, NC State as well as the state forest, urban forestry, forestry division of, urban, urban forestry division of Department of Forestry.
Uh, just, um, in so doing, please let me know when and if you have done that, so that we're not duplicating effort and not talking to two or three different people.
I will pass notes and, uh, information along to you as, as it is scheduled. Cool, all right, thank you for the clarification, and I believe that is it for me, and questions?
Okay.
I was gonna carry on with, uh, what Commissioner Cohen said, you remember when we were doing the UDO over that two-year period?
Yes, I do.
Paul Shelton was a.
Yes.
He's an arborist.
Yes, and we have a.
And he's a local man, and, uh, because he had some great ideas about, um, bushes and trees and things like that, so maybe we could reach out to him.
He certainly worked hard on the list of trees that would be appropriate and for underwires and stuff like that, so, so certainly.
Just a, just a thought, keep that in.
There'll be a public opportunity, but I'm personally helping, Mr. Shelton's very, very involved in another project.
I know he is, I, I, I realize that.
Actually, that, that, they're probably, yes.
I hope so.
Trying to move right forward. I only want to add my thanks for the discussion tonight. My thanks to staff involved with the Public Works Committee meeting last week, which was really interesting, a lot going on. Staff involved in the planning committee meeting today, there's just a lot happening in Oxford. It is a very exciting time, um, because there's so much going on. So I just want to say thank you to everybody that is working and thinking hard about how to make Oxford great for not just the people that are here today, but for the next generation. So, thank you very much, and Mr. Thornton, do you have anything else you want to add?
Very, very quickly, I want to, um, also say thank you, but to say thank you to Amy personally for her efforts in, um, getting the city a couple of, of grants that we've not mentioned. We've been sent, um, letters from the North Carolina Division of Environmental Quality, Division of Water Infrastructure, um, has reviewed our application for asset inventory and assessment, and they are providing us a hundred and fifty thousand dollar grant to do our wastewater system AIA, and a hundred and fifty thousand dollar grant to do our water system AIA. So, I wanted to say thank you, uh, to Amy for that effort. Thank you.
Thank you very much, that's great news, that's, great news, they helped us a lot the first time around. Very good.
And that's really part of the initiative in doing it again, is to keep us as high up on the point rating schedule as we can possibly be for submitting the projects for grant funding and funding.
Wonderful, thank you. Later we can talk, there's, I've gotten a letter from Congressman Price that there's more money available, so that's an opportunity as well.
Have a conversation prior to that, um, work session, work session webinar.
Great, excellent. Mr. Burnett, anything from you?
A man.
Okay, well, with that, is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Bullock, any discussion? Okay, let's roll. Everybody's in favor, thank you very much.